And I praise you for the path that he's taking to save this country from globalism. And so with that thought, I'd like to pray for our president and you people here in this room. Lord, I pray for our president and the people that he has in office supporting him. And we pray too that the people would realize and do some reading and understand what he has to do. It's a mission impossible. And I pray, Lord, that you be with him, be with the people here in this local community that are responsible for how this committee, how this county operates and how it works. And each of you in this room have the responsibility to maintain this nation for what it means. The Constitution is the book that we need to look at. Thank you. Amen.
He also would like to address the commission this morning. Okay, for your non, Stephen will turn to you for a legal update. Right, county administration update, honey?
All right, good morning. Just a few updates here for week in review. Last week, the governing board of the major crime unit did meet to amend the bylaws. This was making sure that the membership was clearly outlined to incorporate the counties and entities that are now part of that organization. Those will be on your agenda next week to adopt those as the board here as part, with you all being a member of that council of governments. I think next week when Commissioner Davis is here, he might have additional information to share on that. Fairfield County Personnel Policy Manual is continually reviewed for necessary updates and changes. When an update is recommended, it's presented by resolution to you all for approval. Right now, Kamen Resources is working on some updates and has recently reached out to county leadership to see if they have any suggested alterations. So we'll be working through that process this summer. No Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, July 1st. We will meet next Tuesday. It is that following Tuesday that there will not be a commission meeting. The review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals, and we have fifteen resolutions on the agenda for the regular voting meeting, a few that I'll point out here. We do have a resolution for the approval of an amendment to the engagement letter for the preparation of the 2024 Annual Conference of Financial Report. Amendment allows for additional assistance in reporting grant receivables and tax increment financial activity. The cost for the additional assistance is not expected to exceed thirty-four hundred, and the total for that then would be approved for up to one hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred. Dr. Brown, would you like to add anything to that one? EMA has a resolution to nominate the Fairfield County Local Emergency Planning Committee for the State Emergency Response Commission. This is an ORC nomination requirement, and the term for the nomination is August twenty-fifth through August twenty-seventh. John?
Uh, just, uh, our people.
Thank you.
Yes, happy to have you. Commissioner Davis?
As are we.
Or you said?
Yes. Or mine. Bennett is helpful. Me and Commissioner Davis and Bennett are all very happy to be a part of that. Engineer's Office has six resolutions. The first is to approve memo receipts, memo expenses for Fund 2050, which is for subdivision inspections, maintenance, and repairs. There's two resolutions to award the resurfacing and micro-surfacing projects, resolution to advertise for pavement markings, resolution to approve the campground road bridge project, and a notice to commence for that same bridge project. And Jeremiah, I know you've been talking about the campground road bridge project in other meetings. I've been with you lately, didn't know if you wanted to add anything on that.
No, we're just, we've moved that project along because Lancaster has some interest in some of the industrial park there for possible tenants, possible jobs coming, so we wanted to get that done, have it ready. Currently, it's a bridge and it's flu-graded, so that causes a problem for all the construction traffic and heavy loads and things like that. So we opted to go ahead and move that forward, get it done. So that was out of the way for Lancaster. That way their construction traffic isn't interrupted and they're free to move forward with white paint campground roads if they want to do that.
Appreciate that. I know at the TED meeting, Stephanie Boska was sharing her appreciation for that with some development that could be occurring, that that is being really helpful for. Do you want to add anything on that record?
Oh, we're still working with that.
Awesome, thank you. Anything else on the other resolutions?
Just moving work forward. Interestingly enough, Shelley Company did not get paid any.
A new company?
What's that?
A new company?
No, it was, uh, um, cozying it.
Oh.
So it's rare that Shelley loses a bid right here in Lancaster. That's why I said it's very rare.
Sheriff's Office has two resolutions on the agenda for service agreements there with Bloom Carroll and Canal Winchester Schools. Transit also has a resolution to approve a service agreement with Meals on Wheels, the senior hub for transportation services. Rick, anything there?
Continuing to, uh, continuing to partner with Meals on Wheels. With the county, yeah.
How are things moving along for the rebranding of the buses? I know we did the one for the ribbon cutting.
Yeah, we're working through the process right now.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, they finalized most of those.
Yeah, that'll be exciting, along with the markings on some of the road areas, or is that to come later? Gotcha. Utilities has a resolution to approve the contract awarded to Green Cuts Lawn Maintenance Landscaping for twenty-five, twenty-six Boeing services. Community Action has a resolution to authorize their community housing impact and preservation program grant application submission. We had hearing, public hearings on May twenty-seventh and June tenth. June tenth, sorry, I can't speak this morning. Do you want to, you guys want to add anything to that from Community Action? Okay, we'll get that over the finish line for you all then. Bart, any budget update?
No update this week.
All right, thank you. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received.
Thank you. There will be a Salvation Army Leadership Recognition on June nineteenth at nine a.m. at the Crowe Communications Office located at four fifteen East Main Street here in Lancaster. An invitation was received for the CCAO Summer Symposium. It will be August twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth at the Hocking Hills Lodge and Conference Center in Logan. The commissioners received the following correspondence: Notice of a Class One Modification to an R-CRA Permit Renewal Application from Service Solutions, the 2024 Year in Review from the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging, and Correspondence Regarding Large-Scale Solar Facilities. That is all we have today.
Thank you, Rochelle. On the CCAO Summer Symposium, that, the last day of that, August twenty-sixth, does fall on a Tuesday, and I believe that there's interest from all these two commissioners to be attending that, so we, that is something we will be looking to place on the agenda for you all to change the schedule to make the twenty-sixth meeting at five-thirty that evening. So that will be coming forth probably next week or the week after.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, want to do it then? Okay. Yeah, I'll look and make sure there's no conflicts in time, but we'll nail that down. Perfect, thank you. That's all I have.
Updates from elected officials in the department heads. You said?
I was going to be here this morning, but my vendor and I had a just came back from the Herford Association Summer Conference, very good conference. As most of you are, we're still just kind of watching and waiting to see what's going to happen in the state. That's kind of in the forefront of all of our minds right now, so I don't know what's going on.
All right, Jeremiah?
So, um, talked a little bit about some of the construction stuff, but yesterday I took a trip over to Madison County and some solar facilities over there. Spent some time with Brian Doon, Madison County Engineer. He's been through this at pretty much all levels. He's got brand new ones coming in right now. He's got ones that are finished and up and operating. Picked up a lot of really good information. If we do have construction going on in Fairfield County, I got a, I got a lot of good perspective and a lot of good information out of him.
Dr. Bonson?
Good morning. Tax bills were printed and they were mailed yesterday, so they should be arriving at door, on the doorsteps of folks, probably starting tomorrow. Were closed on Thursday, so we're expecting a very busy day on Friday.
But I do believe I saw John had submitted to have no parking out front again, except for tax parking, so I did see that come through as approved from the city of Lancaster.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Also, if you're talking to anyone who says they enjoy using the drive-through on Chestnut Street, just remind them the drive-through will be closed for the second half collection due to building issues.
Renovations.
Well, renovation, all that, that's positive, renovation.
Good for the beginning of next year.
Thank you.
Dr. Brown?
Morning. As tax bills are being received, as the sex annual update is upon us, there have been several opportunities for education and outreach, both locally in Central Ohio and Channel Ten. The spots, the articles. The main point here that I have continued to bring home is that one dollar increase in property valuations does not mean one dollar increase in property taxes. If people have just that aspect and they're thinking it's very helpful in terms of navigating and evaluating all of the things that are before legislators now as well. Trust that all the associations are working together. We do know that the Senate and the House are in conference now, and hopefully there'll be a refined proposal that'll be helpful to all of the local public entities. And we continue to participate that with our association, creating talking points. If you'd like more information about that, I have that available. I have an audit update. This is a very good update. Here, here first, no comments, no citations, no findings, which is a very unusual year. And just want to say thank you to everyone who is participating in that audit. It's a burdensome and extensive process. This year it was condensed, using quite a bit of technology to receive and exchange information, and we are already, in terms of the deficiency, thinking about the next year, about how we can gather that because our auditors were mostly remote. We did meet with them Thursday, and we had really good communication. The ACFR and the PAFR, the Annual Conference of Financial Report and the Populated Report is already ready, at least two weeks earlier than it ever has been before. Now, and I reviewed those this morning, and you should see those for publication quite soon. Other things of efficiency, we had three different lot splits that were accomplished within one week. That was a process that normally took up to six months, so again, very pleased with all of the collaboration that's happened with that. Dot Link is already in process as well. We're hearing from townships that that is helpful. We knew that schools would be on board with this type of process, but the encouraging thing is that townships are embracing this quite a bit as well. With our Speakers Bureau, we're focusing on AI. We have several different presentations relating to how we produce the sex annual process using artificial intelligence, and that's been very well-received. In your review folder this week is the advanced copy of a stat table relating to the number of employees within the county. Let me know if you have any questions about that. Relating to the budget commission, we're doing a lot of review and analysis for the library allocation, quite a bit of extensive analysis for that. And as we prepare for the August meeting, we will need financial data and stewardship narratives relating to property tax levies, and we've selected an internal deadline of mid-July for that. We communicated about that verbally and did send something out in written form, just to have that in everybody's thinking for July, so that we're well-prepared for the August meeting. Thinking about July, there'll be a couple of the new options presented relating to savings for employees, different options that they can use to make things more convenient. Research does show that individuals save more when it's convenient for them, so we have some ideas that will be helpful for that. And then we've developed some fact sheets this morning to help with your land accounting. As we are closing out the regular audit, we move into the federal financial audit, and these fact sheets are based on lessons we've learned. It can be helpful for people that have federal funding.
So, circle back to the audit for a minute. It said no findings and no comments.
Findings, no comments, no citations.
So, trying to come up with an analogy for that, you know, sports is my thing, so to me, no comments, no findings, no citations, it's like if the Columbus Blue Jackets goalie didn't allow a goal for twenty games straight, right? Almost impossible to pull off.
It is very rare. I can recall a couple of times in the nineties, and things are quite complex now as you compare to decades ago. It is a very unusual circumstance, and it is a credit to a couple of different things, the collaboration that happens, communication, of course, but things like an internal control manual. When that is updated and auditors can review narratives and then verify that those narratives are followed, it makes their time very efficient as well, and it gives them faith and confidence in our procedures.
Congratulations.
To everyone, yes.
Thank you. All right, we are going to look to Nikki. Drake?
Speaking of honest, I'm going to go into one ourselves, but I have a Christina hold, so I don't sweat big stuff as far as that goes. We did have a successful work team last week. It's a three-day camp. We held it at Scott Park, and we had fifteen kids playing in the third quarter and getting great, so.
So, Tiffany?
Thank you.
Josh? Hey, Tony? Tony, you're going to be a teacher today, buddy. You.
I'll keep it tight.
That's right, I heard you got a couple words.
At least I didn't get the other arm.
We started our summer camps at the Workforce Center, so if anybody wants to come at eleven o'clock on Fridays, that's really a big way to come, parents can, so.
Video and additional features.
And then last week, I jumped to fly to Andro's headquarters with a group of other workforce folks. Androll is a supplier that makes drones, autonomous submarines, basically anything you would see in a video game. That's real now. And so we got to see their headquarters and meet with their staff. I know there's a lot of concern with intel and how that was the way these Androlos addressed it, wanted it as fast as possible. And one of the best things was, they're like, this is new for us. This area is new for us. Tell us what we need to do. So it was a pressure change from a lot of larger companies, and it was like, this is what you're doing. And it is really, it's really, it's going to be interesting.
Thank you for going.
Where is their headquarters?
It's coast to mace, the Californians, just south. There was a little bit of fun.
One day.
Just one. One call, one day.
Coaches?
We did have a joke class. Yeah, we did have a joke class. We did have a different drone. And they were back pretty, so, yeah, nothing. They have never been someplace manufacturing so much security.
I'm sure.
Everywhere, yeah, back ground shacks, and we yeah, we had this war, this war, this war, yeah.
Dan Neely?
Nothing from the community. Thanks, good morning. I just want to say thank you to everybody who attended last week's World of Elder Abuse Awareness Breakfast. It was a really nice event, the presentation on the same sponsored program and a story from our partners in Fairfield Federal about one of their customers who was impacted by that program. Also want to say congratulations to Ron Thompson, who was awarded the partner in serving seniors.
All right, Jeff?
Just a reminder that the dog shelter will be helping the community at various community events. Our dog warden, Leanne, appeared at the Rotary meeting yesterday. We have sixty-five dogs at the shelter, which is the highest number we've ever had. So we're going to encourage folks to get out, check out, check out the adoptable dogs. If you know of anybody who's looking, please let them know that we have a great selection.
Notice that Commissioner Davis is online, pointing out there, Commissioner, if you have anything you want to comment on or say?
One moment, Commissioner, I'm going to give informations. Commissioner Davis, are you able to speak?
I am, and I, I don't have anything to add, sorry.
Well, thanks for joining us this morning. I know it's a, I'd ask other questions, but maybe we'll just do that private. Um, all right, full business. Commissioner Love?
So while Rick was at Androll, California, I had the privilege of speaking to the graduating Levotomy Class. Rick, I'll have to say this, it's wasn't the same. You've not been there. But Rick always adds a little humor to everything, so he did mention.
All right. Uh, whole business for me is that, you know, the, all the different things that are going on with the state budget and now a proposal having to do with property tax that the CCAO has been hyper-involved, and been having virtual meetings three times a week for the past several weeks. This past week, or, I'm sorry, yeah, this past week, we had the sponsor of Hospital Three Fifty-Five, which is the one that pretty took away inside militant property taxes, which we're not going to get into all that because it's unless you're involved with it. It's complicated and messy and hard to understand, but it would be traumatic if that kind of change were to occur. Lot of commissioners, including myself, asked a number of really tough questions. And I'll give the representative from Astoria a credit. He wasn't close-minded to any potential changes, right? And was interested in hearing how, what he's proposing would impact our county government and our schools and other folks who have inside knowledge. So I say that to say that, you know, there's a lot going on, change is coming, it needs to come, right? We know that property taxes have gotten out of control. How we do that and when we do that is critically important. So with the CCAO, and I know the Auders Association, I think every association's working pretty hard to make sure that the Senate and the House both understand completely the short-term and long-term impacts that will occur, depending on what they decide to do. They have two weeks yet to figure out what they're going to do with the budget. Once they've done that, we'll have a much more clear understanding of what we have to do, and we'll have those conversations at that time. Commissioner Davis, do you want to comment on that topic at all?
No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, new business, Commissioner Love?
On this Friday, albeit, uh, the recognizing leadership at Salvation Army, primarily the De Michaels.
Thursday.
The Thursday.
Thursday, yep.
I would have been there regardless.
Yes, you would have.
But the De Michaels has been in our community for years and years. I believe to Cincinnati for promotion, but they're certainly going to be best because they were very effective in what they've done.
Uh, your only new business item is that next Tuesday I will be again out of town on business, so we'll be here, but that hopefully will be in for the year, not kind of wood. Um, any other business before the commission, before we go into the voting? All right, we'll get to our voting pattern. If you all would rise if you're able, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Thank you. Rochelle, are there announcements?
Yes, just wanted to announce that Fairfield County offices will be closed to this coming Thursday in observance of Juneteenth.
Good. Is there a motion for the approval of the next for June tenth, two thousand twenty-five?
A move.
Second, on favor, please say the five of saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Rochelle?
From the Fairfield County Auditor Resolution twenty-two-five-six dot seventeen dot A, a resolution authorizing the approval of an amendment to the Engagement Letter for Preparation of Twenty-Twenty-Four ACFR Financial Statements Provided by Local Government Services of the Auditor of State.
A move.
Second, discussion?
Here today, we talked about the success of the twelve thirty-one twenty-quarter audit. While this relates to the twenty-quarter audit, I will say that it really does prepare us for future years in answering some questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Love?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. The Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution twenty-two-five-six dot seventeen dot B, a resolution in the matter of nominations to the Fairfield County Local Emergency Planning Committee, LEPC, for the EMA.
Second, discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Love?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. From Fairfield County Engineer, twenty, Resolution twenty-two-five-six dot seventeen dot C, a resolution to request for appropriations for additional unanticipated receipts of memo receipts and memo expenses for Fund twenty fifty for annual inspections, repairs, and maintenance in various subdivisions as of six-six twenty-five.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, I mean, Resolution C, E, F, D, and H.
Second, discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Love?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. For Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution twenty-two-five-six dot seventeen dot I, a resolution regarding an amendment for previously approved network placement and related services agreement between Youth Thrive LLC and Child Protective Services Department.
Second, discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Love?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. The Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution twenty-two-five-six dot seventeen dot J, a resolution authorizing the approval of a service agreement by and between Fairfield County Sheriff's Office and Bloom Carroll Schools.
Under Fairfield County Sheriff by the Constitution J, K.
Second, discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Love?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. From Fairfield County Transit, Resolution twenty-two-five-six dot seventeen dot L, a resolution authorizing the approval of a service agreement by and between Fairfield County Transit and Meals on Wheels.
Second, discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Love?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. From Fairfield County Utilities, Resolution twenty-two-five-six dot seventeen dot M, a resolution to approve the contract award for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six lawn mowing contract with Green Cuts Lawn Maintenance Landscaping.
Second, discussion? So, I was looking through this last night, and did the first group just decide they didn't want to do the work, or what happened? All right, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Love?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. From Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency, Resolution twenty-two-five-six dot seventeen dot N, a resolution approving authorization to submit the PY twenty-twenty-five Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program Grant Application and Implementation Plan to the Higher Department of Development Office of Community.
Second, discussion?
Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Payment of Bills, Resolution Twenty Twenty Five dash six dot seventeen dot O. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners.
Second, discussion?
Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June twenty-fourth at nine a.m.
All right, is there any other business to come before the commission this morning? I'm looking for a motion. Second, you are, all in favor, please sign if I was saying aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming today.